Okay, it's one o'clock. I'll now call to order the September 2nd, 2025 school board meeting of the San Antonio School District Board of Directors. All directors were present. Director Schreiber, Director King, Director Murray, and Director Evans are present. Today, we are offering two opportunities for the public to speak. Comments specific to the consent agenda will be allowed prior to the vote on those items. Citizens who have submitted submitted a request to speak during the public comment section of the agenda will be called upon to make their comments at that time, which is the end of the meeting. Would you please stand for the flag so we can...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the agenda before you for the September 2nd, 2025 regular school board meeting? Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the September 2nd, 2025 regular school board meeting as written?
So moved.
Seconded by Director Murray, seconded by Director King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. That passes unanimously. The board has had the opportunity to review the August 19th, 2025 regular board meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the August 19th, 2025 regular board meeting? Moved by Director King.
Second.
Seconded by Director Evans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. That passes unanimously.
Sorry, no, please go back with that, I abstained. Thank you.
Okay, because you were not here. Thank you, Director Murray. It is time for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. The first item on the superintendent's report is donations. There's four donations to read in today. The first is $7,109.30 from the Utsalati Elementary Booster Club to cover remaining balances of the fifth grade outdoor camp field trip to Camp Seymour. Second is $343.60 from the UES Booster Club to cover the transportation costs of the June field trip to Twin City Bowling. Third is $2,792 from the Cedar Home Elementary PTO to cover the remaining balance of the fifth grade camp upper education field trip. And lastly, $588.50 from the Cedar Home Elementary's PTO to cover transportation costs to the June field trip to Comano Island State Park. Thanks once again to the donors. It's nice to continue to be able to read in donations from community members that are supporting our schools and directly to our students. The next item on the superintendent's report is the strategic plan, excuse me, strategic plan review. And this is an annual update of the strategic plan. I think it's appropriate that today is the update to the strategic plan as it's the first day of school and the strategic plan drives and is a roadmap to what happens in the classroom and in shaping what is leading up to what goes on in the classroom. I'll just note that you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, as you can, on all of our slides, is that the promise lives there and that is the center of our actions over the last three years. Once again, it is every student is empowered to learn in an inclusive setting and is prepared for their future of their choice. And that could be sort of maybe to every student, every future, which is what I hear some people saying around buildings. And I appreciate that. This is really the three-year progress of the strategic plan, adopted in 2022 with over 2,500 pieces of feedback and 150 volunteers to sit on the committee. We are moving into year four of five of the strategic plan that continues to focus on the goals, pillars, and three phases of implementation, which we'll talk about each of those today. Might need a little help here. There we go. Thank you. The first place I'd like to start is around the community feedback. And you saw some of this community feedback in the spring, but I think it's important to highlight it again. As I talked about, the strategic plan started with feedback from the community and was built around the tenants of what the community and the district thought should be a groundwork for our strategic plan. Just to reemphasize, from the spring, 78 point, 70.8% of respondents are satisfied. The quality of education provided, that's up from 67.1% in 2004 and 64% in 2003. Performance perceptions improved. Ratings of teacher quality, student safety, neighborhood, schools, all over 70%. And then finally, just a synthesis of some of the information as we looked at it again, allows us to lean into goals two and three, which I'll talk about here in just a moment. There we go. So the goals, which you're familiar with, lean into really four goals. And as we said before, we're still delivering on our promise and you're familiar with these as they drive our decisions and our focus in the district. And we'll continue to reference the bookends and start with early learning. And early learning accounts for our earliest learners through third grade. And we continue to focus on social-emotional learning as we know that true social-emotional learning actually does move academics and also around the standards. In the first three years, one of the markers is the adoption of the reading and writing curriculum and the implementation of that. And we're starting to see gains in that as we would expect to after three years of after mid-option. The next bookend, I'm going to go all the way to the other end, is future-ready graduates. And I encourage you to look what is written on the screen, probably something that is familiar to you by now. And that is future-ready graduates. And I'd like to actually look at some markers on the future-ready graduates. So this graph was just generated last week because we're getting into having some data back to us with regard to graduation rate. Graduation rate isn't the only marker. We say, is it are our students who leave the system career and/or college ready? And so I'll talk about that here in just a moment. But in January of last year, we made some intensive interventions around graduation rate. We were sitting at about 85% projected rate for Stanwood High School in January and about 45% for Lincoln Hill in January. And through principal intervention, staff check-in, credit retrieval, and other interventions, the earliest data that's come out most guys says that we're about 89% for Stanwood High School. We had five students who graduated from summer school at Stanwood High School, which we think will move us over 90%, which is back in the right trajectory. And two students graduated from Lincoln Hill High School, which will put us in the mid-60s as well. So those interventions around grad rate, we should see those arrows tick up even more. And as you know, because of the lower N size at Lincoln Hill High School, we should be able to see that move.
To clarify, is that four-year graduation or is that just graduation rate total?
Yes, I appreciate that distinction. It's a four-year graduation rate.
Okay.
And many of you know I'm about not necessarily when, but if, or that. And so I appreciate that distinction that that's a four-year grad rate for 2025.
Okay, so our actual overall graduation rate is potentially higher if you would count in...
The five and six, five, six, and seven year.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that.
While we're talking about credit retrieval and kind of the end bookmark there, we had students in summer school, we had 191 students sign up for summer school, maybe not that many that attended or completed, but a total of 245 credits, over 245 credits earned during that time. So a nice job to staff and students, staff that supported, but the kudos go to the students who put in the work in August. So that allows us to talk about the middle two goals, which are engagement and achievement. And these two goals are the focus of the admin PD as well as actions through this year. And I just want to linger on that our focus in leading up to today, the first day of school, with building leaders and staff throughout the district has been around those two focus areas, that is engagement of students and focus on achievement through alignment of standards. And you will continue to hear that this year as we move, as we move through the year. So I want to tie that back to a part of the strategic plan that we haven't really raised over the first three years, and that's about the practices that we have with leadership and with our organizational practices within the system. This page is actually way back in our 46-page document, but not to say we asked our building leaders to focus on one goal they were going to have in these leadership practices this year that they could pinpoint to, to say, we've made growth, our students have made growth because of this leadership practice. They have tied this back to their annual action plan and their school improvement plan, which was revised this year as well. And then next is the organizational practice. And the organizational practices are, you'll see they're nested under our pillars, which are similar to the leadership practices, equitable access to standards aligned effective instruction, strong partnerships with family and community, continuous learning and growth towards excellence, and data-informed improvement. So central office leadership took that and also made goals this year. And so we've bound them, so we have them to reference and we don't lose track of them through the year. But they are goals, for instance, in strong partnership with family and communities. Our goal is to increase community input on ABC committees through increased membership. That's our goal for our organization moving through this year. Another goal around equitable access would be creating alignment with building leadership teams around structures and expectations of team coherence across the district, for instance, including the use of AI to address inclusivity. Okay? So we've already met with building leadership team, it's about 80-something staff members and building leaders to put a marker on that moving into this school year. The last thing I wanted to mention is another piece that I don't think that we've highlighted, but a very important part of the strategic plan, and that's the strategic map, the strategy map that we've accessed. And I'll just say that this is found in kind of the third circle of implementation, which is typically in years four and five of a five-year strategic plan. And the phase of the plan that really centers on the pillars, and I'd invite you to look at those 12 strategies, the 12 priorities. And as you do, you can see most of those are things that are in action to date, with some being emphasized for targeted areas specific to this year in our annual action plans and our strategic plans. So the end of next year, as you know, we'll begin the process of renewing and realigning the plan, the strategic plan. Our strategic plan runs through 2027. And we'll begin to gather feedback and start to do that work of revisioning and revising the strategic plan over the next two years as well. Any questions?
Yeah. On slide six, it was referenced to post-graduation data. What do you have?
Thank you. This is a reference to something I discussed earlier in a plan we have moving forward about how do we know that our graduates were career and college ready? How do we know that they were future-ready? So we gathered contact information from, I think, 171 of our graduates of both Lincoln Hill High School and Lincoln Academy that will contact at regular intervals to get feedback from to say, did your high school beyond plan match your current path? And do you feel like you were career or college ready? So it's that feedback loop for post-graduation data. That's to say, we'll combine that with the feedback we already get through college board and through our current technical education feedback as well.
Back to slide three. Mentioned set of session numbers are up in three different percentages, various good trend. Also mentioned performance perception, perceptions were all over 70%, but roughly, has that been a similar pattern of step up, up, up?
The pattern has increased over the three years that we've completed this survey in March of each year.
And also, on the same slide three, there's a reference to support to mean in the goals two and three. Can you say more about that?
The feedback that we received in March, if we synthesize that, that would say that the community supports us centering on achievement and engagement. Those engagement and achievement, those two goal areas.
Also, slide seven, it was really interesting on that graph, graduation rates. The bottom blue line was dramatic. That improved from Lincoln Hill from about 22% to over 60%. Can you say more about what happened?
Well, I knew the guy that was there between 2013 and 2021. So, you know, there's strategies that I think are employed around making sure that students who come in, and once again, I just want to say, this is four-year graduation rate, like Director Evans pointed out. This is a four-year graduation rate and I don't mind at all talking about a seven-year or a six-year graduation rate as well as to when they become prepared. And, you know, strategic moves around making sure students feel heard and targeting where the interventions that they need coming into that cohort. I'll also point out that Lincoln Hill's N size is small, so any minor change looks big on the graphic.
Yeah. Just supposed to be.
So our, like, our strategic plan was five years, correct?
Five years, from 2022 to 2027.
So I know you say we're in the process of sort of collecting data and all of that. Are we going to follow a very similar process to come up with a new five-year plan that we did from the first one, or do we have a different plan for that?
That's a, that's a good question, which, you know, we need to talk more about as you as the board of directors and me. Typically, the, we can look at a revisioning as opposed to in 2021, as you know.
We didn't have.
There was a, it was a different type of strategic plan.
Yes.
Right. So often what we see, and I think this, this plan is well-positioned for, is to continue to gather feedback from staff, community, students, and to say that we could retune it as we go. But definitely go through a process that might feel and look similar to what we did before. That doesn't mean that last, in 2021, we hired a consultant. That doesn't mean that we necessarily need to do that this time.
For each, you talked about how we're using these to reiterate or to implement changes to our school improvement plans and our annual action plans. I'm assuming we'll hear more about that when we have all of those plans in place. But who, was it like the building leadership teams? Was it all staff? Like, sort of how did, how did we synthesize that data down to add it to that? Like, I guess who was involved in that process?
In the process of moving from this to the AEPs and strategic plan, yeah. It started with central office leadership to building leadership and then with the building leadership teams. And the question we asked is, are the goals and strategies that you had in the spring, in May, still the goals and strategies that make sense after we have our data back and screen assessments? And after we make sure we're realigning and aligning with our instructional practices, which is the first requirement?
One last question. So I know last year we sort of implemented a rather robust, like, planning or like teacher development, again, or professional development. There it is.
Yes.
Plan. Do we have a similar professional development plan with like the three stages, or did we change that this year as well?
So it's still professional development that's, that's happening in the district. And it's, our plan is around continuing the work around our ELA adoption and that kind of cohort professional development. Also strongly looking at math this year and some grouping of district leaders and looking at standards alignment for math, professional development around that. And then, of course, our professional development around AI. We have a teacher, I don't always say part-time teacher, but he's absolutely not a part-time teacher, but part of his day is focused on that professional learning.
Okay. I guess maybe more specifically my question, so Dr. Guian gave us a very specific presentation about this is what professional development looks like. It's this, and it was like this circle back loop thing, and it had a very clear schedule and calendar. I guess my question is, does that look the same this year, or did we change that?
There's...
Because I know that was part of the strategic plan, was like to structure professional development.
The tenants of that are still embedded with Dr. Ryan.
Okay.
Yeah, still embedded with what is planned and kind of the system to move that professional learning forward.
Okay.
Yes. Any more questions? There's another question. Does that end the superintendent's report?
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Villanueva. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Anyone in attendance may speak to the items contained in the consent agenda, and only those items contained in the consent agenda at this time. This is not the portion of the meeting for open public comment. On items outside of the consent agenda, open public comment is coming up soon. Are there any board directors who wish to pull any items from the consent agenda for Okay, hearing them. Are there any people in attendance who wish to speak to any of these consent agenda items? If so, approach the podium or raise your hand online. No one wishes to speak on those. All right. Seeing no raised hands from anyone wishing to speak, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items one through eight?
So moved.
Moved by Director King.
Second.
Seconded by Director Evans. All those in favor of consent agenda items one through eight, say aye.
Aye.
And if no, say no. And that passes unanimously. We have no hold business to discuss public comment. Citizens wishing to address the board were asked to submit online requests using the public comment link on our website or by email two hours prior to the board meeting start. For those attending at first, the request forms were available first mission prior to the meeting start time. And we had no requests there, so... Okay. Topic skipped for board discussion. And we have nothing there, so that brings us down to board director's report on school business conductively, most likely Director Evans.
Overall, I heard really great feedback about all the open houses across the district. Everybody said they were good. There was one recommendation of maybe sixth graders get a little alone time in middle school, similarly how we give ninth graders a little alone time. I've heard that a few places for some suggested feedback. But overall, I think everybody appreciated kind of getting back into the buildings and maybe easing into the swing of things. I also heard positive feedback from Safety Night. I was unable to attend that, but a few people that I know that went there said it was overall very informative and they seemed to value the time that was spent there. So welcome back, everybody, for the first day that came today. Welcome back tomorrow to everybody else. And really hoping to see the kindergarten numbers when they, when they roll in, because we need those kindergartners to show up this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Evans. Director Murray?
Yes, welcome to the first day of school. So I was happy to see buses driving the neighborhoods this morning. So it's, it's always nice to see that. I did get to attend the health and safety night briefly. And I'm also, I heard good things about it as well as I'm looking forward to hopefully engaging in some additional work around that area and engaging our students with the same format of conversation, especially around cell phones and internet safety. I think that's super important for our students to understand the importance of what they're doing with their phones, on internet, and social media. I also wanted to thank leadership for the alignment under the Cedar Spring Elementary. The elementary is going to the Great Camp. I think hopefully that'll be really good as far as public cost savings and we're not all going in multiple different directions and that kind of thing. So I'm grateful to see that happening this year. And that's all. I, um, thank you.
Thank you, Director Murray. Director King?
So went to the health and safety meeting, which is very valuable. And one thing was interesting was the lead speaker that spoke to everybody at the same time was Homeland Security taking on the task of internet safety, which is, I think, pretty special. That started out to be, I think, preventing enough of 9/11, but you're recommending out to other important areas. And also disappointing, disappointment with that evening was there were so few there. About, about the same number of staff and teachers as parents. So there's way more parents than there because they really needed to know this stuff.
Thank you, Director King. And on the fifth grade going to the outdoor camp, I wanted to thank the PTAs, PTOs, and the other people that have stepped forward to make that possible with the withdrawal of state funding for those. And I too enjoyed the health and safety night that our staff put on there and having the young lady from Homeland Security present on helping us keep our kids safe. And that's a regular part of our superintendent's priority there. I think about every six months we do that. So thank you on that. This morning, I got to... I got to watch the kids come back at high school, both Lincoln Hill and Stanwood, Saratoga School, middle school, the elementary schools on the mainland here, and they make it out to the island there. You know, the issue I saw was some of our schools, there's a little concern with traffic the first week or two of school there with everybody dropping kids off. But that will work itself out. And just appreciate everything the staff has done over the summer to get us ready for this point. And I will always give the last word to the superintendent here.
Thank you. As has already been said up here, thanks to, it's the first day of school. Someone said earlier today, it's the second best day next to graduation. And it kind of feels that way. And I'd almost say, we've been leading up to the first day of school for a while now. So it feels good to have students back. That's why we're here. And I want to keep it centered on that. So thanks to the staff that have prepared the way for the students for showing up, but also thanks to the parents for getting students here today. We'll welcome our tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders at Stanwood High School tomorrow. There's a lot of activities in the community, and we invite the community to engage in those activities with our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Villanueva. And there being no further.
Excuse me, my last name. Would you like to touch on the CFAC meeting that's coming up? I would love to see more attendance.
Sure. We have a CFAC team meeting, which stands for Capital Facilities Advisory Committee, on Tuesday, the ninth, at five-thirty in this room. And we've also invited CFAC, the capital, the budget committee, advisory committee, as well, as we're going to focus on the potential for capital levy at that meeting. And it's really important that we get community feedback around that, that topic as we move forward quickly. So thanks for that. Director Murray?
Thank you. And just a reminder, we have a special meeting this evening at five o'clock in the room here to interview candidates for our vacant board position for District Four. So we will be interviewing them here at Mullet. You're all invited to that. And I believe we will be transmitting that live stream and recording that. After the interviews, we will go into consecutive session and discuss performances. And we will come back out and we'll probably take action on filling our vacancy on the board here. And if there is no further business, the September second to two thousand and twenty-five regular board meeting is hereby adjourned.